Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our January Ada meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order and Tracy, please make call the role.
I would love to. Chairman in the room, cloud, present. Mr. Andre.
President.
Council Cuddy.
Here.
Miss Crawford. Mayor Giantino.
Here.
Miss Leon here, Mr. Level, you're Miss Walter here. And Rob Foyer is noting his appearance. And Jenny Haynes is here.
I just have a clarifying, then the question, the minutes and the roll call on the second page, should I go through these resolutions first?
Yeah, so the first is annual anything?
Yes, I'm with you. Yeah, great. Do I need to call it over?
We just did.
Okay, cool. All right, so the first thing that we have on our agenda, and technically this is our annual meeting. So we're flowing in this mode to accomplish some things first. So the intro, the first thing I need to do is introduce the resolution, the annual resolution addressing organizational matters. Tracy, you have something to show us?
So sorry that this was a long packet, but I tried to give you table of contents to help you find things. The resolution is in the packet and there's a few different sections. Did you want me to run through the sections? So section one, sections one and two are basically policies and updating policies. They've all been through committee and there's been no changes other than kind of formatting, getting the branding updated. So all of the committees have recommended re-adopting all of these policies. Section three is to appoint committees. We do have one committee. If we leave, the committee is the same. We do have one committee that position open on the audit committee. And then we do have a position open on the marketing committee. I mean, you chair for that committee. And then section five is for the officers other than Gwen. Gwen is appointed by city council, so. But this board appoints the vice chair and secretary. Bill indicated that he'd like to step back from that vice chair role, so we need a volunteer for that. And then finally, section six is kind of is appointing me as the interim executive director in providing me with authorization for contracting as contracting officer and for the Paris reporting system. So it's really just getting everything done in one resolution rather than trying to do ten resolutions. So piece by piece, I think, is helpful. So are there any comments on the first two sections around the policies? Questions, concerns? And what about for the committee? So there's two sections on this. Those are regulatory committees and the standing committee and the marketing committee. Again, we need a couple of volunteers for these committees.
I just have a question, Tracy, about the timing of meeting to fill these empty positions. Does it have to happen at this meeting? Or can people think about it and then we formally do it? How would you like to, how do we need to proceed?
Like to fill the audit committee, just because that committee is going to have stuff to do in the next couple of months. The marketing committee, we can think about and come back to.
And then what about the vice chair position?
Um, the sooner we fill that, the better, just because for some reason you're not able to attend a meeting.
Right.
That's the bad.
So. Questions, comments, concerns? Do we have anyone who's willing to volunteer? It seems like the priority seat to fill is that one on the audit committee? So we have Stephanie and Jimmy who are already there. Tracy, can you talk more about how often this committee meets, what their work entails?
This committee is generally going to meet twice a year, once in March to review the draft audit before the board sees it. And then once in the fall to go over policies and to look forward to an upcoming audit. If there's some question about who will be doing our audit, the audit committee might meet once more to review, say, candidates or proposals, but generally we're talking two, maybe three times a year for this committee. And you just have to be able to listen actively.
And it's usually before meetings, correct?
Um, we can do it before meetings. Sometimes it's helpful to do that March one, maybe like a week ahead. So the committee has time to digest, but also if there's any adjustments that need to be made to the draft, those can be made for the full board, but we can do them right before the meeting as well. Either way.
Any takers? Need to think about it?
I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that.
You're not. I was in the volume of vice chair.
I'm like, I'm already secretary.
So we'll, we'll put Dan into this audit committee position. We can hold off on the marketing.
I just have one clarifying question about that, too. Does that position have to be filled by a sitting member of the board?
No, it does not.
Okay.
So the marketing committee, I created, I decided it's a special committee, so it can be filled by not working.
So what I'd like to invite you all to do is just to think about who's in your network that might have the kinds of skills that the marketing committee's been thinking about. For this first year, we're primarily focused on just making sure our website's up to date, sort of thinking through what strategies are that we could use to act on the pieces of our priority that are really about promoting Auburn as a great place to do business. We talked a little bit about engaging some of our stakeholders in conversations. So, so I think somebody who understands technology, social media, just philosophically. So if you have someone in your networks that you think would be great at this, I would love to have them. I think if we have an emerging leader in here in Auburn that we think this would be a great opportunity to, not only to let them share their skills, but also expose them to the work of an entity like Ada. I think it's a great way for us to start building a pipeline for future people to walk in our footsteps. So I'll give you all a chance to think about. The mayor has expressed interest in wanting to populate the board with some other women and/or people of color. I'm about, let's find the person who's willing to do it and get it seated. Just keep these as priorities for us and then we'll move in those directions. Okay? And then with regard to the vice chair, I would like for some of you to think about it. I have people in mind, but I don't want to ask anybody. But we do need to populate that seat, Tracy, today, or can I give people time to kind of?
It could be February, as long as you're going to be at the February meeting.
I'm going to be at the February. All right, so we're going to do this February. Then Tracy, you want to talk just a little bit more in detail about what the responsibilities would be for that? I promise not to stand joke. I just won't do any business travel on this day. How about that?
Otherwise Terry is on the hook.
He's, he's like, I'm on the hook already. All right, but just would you talk a little bit about what that might entail?
Yeah, so the vice chair position is really a backfill for the chair position. So primarily the responsibilities are, you know, you want to be in touch with what's happening with the board because you may have to fill in as the chair if the chair is not at a meeting. Or kind of fill in if the chair is unavailable to, to make spot decisions. I don't know, Billy, you want to talk about your experience as vice chair? That might be more helpful than me saying the specifics. But primarily it's filling in any things.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I felt. I felt I didn't have the time to do it all, but yeah, it was filling again meetings. I just. I just, I didn't feel comfortable because I didn't have the time. I just. Especially since my concussion, having time and active concentration. So. I mean, it's, it was enjoyable. But you have to, to do it right, you have to.
The other thing that I would offer, because there was a time when I was absent and Bill did have to run the meeting. And what I'm saying is that I would be very much so committed to making sure that, should the vice chair have to run the meeting on my behalf, that we met in advance in the way that Tracy and I do. We go over the agenda. You get an annotated agenda, so I would make sure that you would be prepared to step into that role and responsibility. So if I could invite you to think about it, and if one of you would be willing to be the support to my position in that way, I'd be really thankful for that. And I'm a woman of my word, so I would never just leave you hanging. We would really work together as a team. And even if you wanted to, just to kind of come into some of those meeting planning meetings with Tracy and I, so you know what we do in advance. I'd be more than open to having that happen. Council Cuddy?
Yes, Chair, I was just wanting to say, like, if it takes, if any, if anybody, I would, went to the vice chair position, if somebody would become secretary. So I just wanted to offer that as a possibility. Because, you know, that frees up some. But if like, if somebody wants to be vice chair, be my guest. But if you're uncomfortable going to the second round decision, I would be willing to do that if somebody would become secretary.
So that offer is on the table? Thank you, Council Cuddy. And I, I think that makes a lot of technical sense and a lot of ways as well.
And my responsibility is signing.
I can have one here for you later.
All right, that's basically what he does. So again, if someone would just think about this, and again, I'm committed to making those of us who are positioned as officers, making the work of that position is easy, effective, and efficient for you. So Council Cuddy, I think there's lots of good reasons for us as a board to consider that. And if someone, one of you would think about moving into the secretary's position, I'll still bet everybody an opportunity, if Terry's willing to do it and there's consensus around that, we could handle that today. And then in February, we would deal with the secretary's position. Don't let me do anything.
Oh, this is all, this is all fine.
I've been looking at Rob.
I can possibly do that.
Great. Look at us being. So do I need, we need, we need to vote on these, do I need to make a motion for this position?
I'll recite a motion.
Okay.
For everybody.
Yes.
Fill in these changes.
Okay, great. Is Stephanie still here? Oh, she's still there. So, so I stepped out and see him. So what we're going to do, what we need to do in order to formalize this is that we're going to put a motion on the floor to move our colleagues into these roles and then we'll do the things we did when a motion hits the table. Tracy's putting one to go draft together.
And so before we launch the motion, and are there any questions on section six, which is just reaffirming the interim director position and my responsible. So this is going to be a role, I'll vote for this resolution. So the motion would be to approve the resolution amended with Dan Level as member of the audit committee. Terry Cuddy as the vice chair and Dan Level as the secretary.
Are you tabling section four?
And leaving the third seat of the marketing committee.
Because we're going to find that person. They're in this community. Check your networks.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, want to call the role?
Mr. Under. Mayor Giantino.
Hi.
Council Cuddy.
Yes.
Miss Crawford is excused. Mr. Level. Miss Walter. Yes, Miss Leon.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
With regard to the marketing of spot. Are there any internships that people that are doing interns?
I mean, from my, the high school level, they're still like wrapping their head around, like, they're really at the end of the level of like almost reduction in technical elements, they're not really getting to your role like major conceptual marketing strategies. So I mean, I wouldn't, it'd be premature. I would defer even post-college, somebody that's
Okay.
that's, that has experience with marketing, you know, Katie, obviously the former board member was, that was definitely in her wheelhouse. So we're trying to look for somebody like Katie, but even if they're not on board, that opens up some, we, that helps by people. And Dan and I have had experience, but you know, we, we might want to find somebody that's down on the board then. I think I do like that idea.
So do I. I, I would appreciate that. And if we can just keep in mind what we're trying to accomplish, given how we're going to be promoting us, if they have some baseline web knowledge, some understanding of how to use social media, understanding of sort of, it would be like event planning kind of work, right? If we decided to post a conversation, and I'd love to create the opportunity for an emerging leader to start to engage in the work of Ada in that way.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We know someone in this. You get to play city manager. Think about who you know. Um, so Tracy, the next thing would be the board evaluation and fiduciary forms. I just want to make sure I'm.
Yes, I do have lots of the board evaluations back. If you haven't done one, please do that. Turn it to me. And the fiduciary forms, I did hand out and on the table. Man, someone's around to put in your files aside. This is the fiduciary form is just. Basically kind of a explaining conflicts of interest and what your fiduciary duties are and just ask that they're signed annually.
There is, I think, that is the other.
Oh, okay. And then for the self-evaluation, for the board evaluations, first reach out to schedule governance committee meeting before our next board meeting to review those. So if you're the one or two persons that haven't filled it out, yes, yes, is that what I said?
Yeah, I think that will prioritize everything for.
So I will, thank you. The rich, the written papers. This is also for you, Terry. And the, so the governance committee will schedule a meeting to review the board evaluations and report back February.
So if you could get those completed, that would be great. Again, just the purpose of that is for us to get a gauge of how we're feeling like we're operating as a board in areas that we might need to engage in some improvement. So I'd appreciate if we could get to 100% of response from that. Anything else for the annual meeting before I adjourn it? Could I ask for a motion, right?
Yes.
So if there's no other business to come before us during our annual meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the annual meeting.
So.
Second. Okay, any discussion about that? All those in favor? Do you need to roll call it? Nope, okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor. I just pulled the train on the station and instantly acknowledged you out there. So we are now back into our regular meeting. Do we need to do a roll call again?
I'll just note that it's the same roll call as at the beginning of that. It works for me.
So everyone should have. Do we need to do it? I was waiting. All right, so we had an opportunity to review the minutes from our December meeting. If there are any corrections, conversations, please let us know. I'll give you a few minutes to take another look. If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
The opposed, extensions? For doing the things. We're moving into the unfinished business section. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Tracy.
So the, the first piece is the 2025 administrative services contract. This is on the agenda last month, but we were a little late on attendance, so we decided to just hold off until this month. This is essentially the same contract that we had last year and, or for 2024. Same terms, there's, it's set up as an interim contract, meaning if for some reason Ada decides they want to get their administrative services elsewhere at some point during the year, it's a very easy out. No penalties, seven days notice. So it is set up to be an interim contract. Rob has reviewed it. Any comments?
No, it's essentially the same as the last one.
So, yeah, so this would just be to continue the contract to 2025 based on the budget that's put into place.
Motion to approve it. So I would entertain a motion to approve our contract with Swiftwater, right? For, to continue Tracy's services as administrative services to the Ada. Can I get a second? Any discussion, questions?
Did you have any questions, Council?
Not sitting in my normal seat. I did that on purpose. All right, if there are no questions or concerns, I would. We do have to roll call this, we can just do this. I would ask all those in favor.
Hi.
Any opposition, extensions? No, it passes. I'll cite this, Tracy.
Okay.
Next thing?
So the next thing, I did want to give you an update on the strategic framework. I apologize for not getting it out with the packet. I've mainly been working on kind of putting an action plan into a lot of these strategies and. Jimmy, if I'm sure this, are you going to be able to see it? Not sure what your, what device you're using.
Right now, I just see all of you.
That's a good thing, Mayor.
That's great.
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. So what I've been trying to fill in is some additional detail over here, but really focusing on action steps, and I'll send this out to everybody so you can really look through it. But basically breaking these actions down into specific steps and who would be responsible for them. There's a lot that's myself or Grace or Gwen, so we might need to look if there's opportunities for the board to step in on some of these. But for example. You know, just breaking down into very bite-sized manageable steps, so we can feel like we're really making progress towards these and actually are making project progress towards these. So, you know, like in terms of the website updates, really doing an inventory of where are their local broken links to the CDO website, identifying what information we need to recreate versus what we can pull from other organizations, determining and then updating those links as necessary and then working with the potentially the marketing committee to recreate any information that we need to create or update. Updating any data references, so really kind of starting to, Dan, I put you on establish an appropriate redirect for AuburnIDA.com because we have that. I just don't know how to make it go where it needs to go. It'll take you two seconds, so. So really just starting to create steps and specific activities related to these actions. I still need to work out this advocacy piece because again, it's not necessarily where some of my more where my expertise is, but I'll continue to work on that. On D E C web, and Grace actually just did a real day on that, so we can put together some information on that. But yeah, so I'll send this out and everybody can look at it, but hopefully this is heading in the right direction of what you were thinking in terms of an actual work plan and the activities that we actually want to undertake this year. There are a few that are attached to committees, so we'll need to make sure that we're, especially the marketing committee, make sure that we're bringing those items to those committees. So that's where we are.
Great. And it's just hard for me to see this, Tracy. So are the, are the steps embedded? Are they like the next column in the chart? The look, the way it looks now, it's just hard for me to read. So I wouldn't be easy for me to align what's, there you go.
So if I were to actually.
This is what you get for working with seniors.
It is, so like these, if I were to actually put the borders around them, like I should.
Right.
Like, these are the steps associated.
Guy, that's what I wanted to have it look like.
Yep. I just need to actually add it in the first. So yeah, I'll add the borders and then send them around to the group. I think I also owe you an update to the pipeline, so I'll send that to.
So Tracy, when you look at this work plan and you were developing it, did sort of a theme for the work of this board for this year emerge for you?
Um, it definitely, it's definitely leaning towards communication and how do we communicate with, within, but also with the outside world now that we are kind of working independently.
Right.
So making sure that our website is in a good place to communicate our values and what we're trying to accomplish and the information that we need to have that used to be hosted elsewhere. But also doing the monitoring visits that I slash we are supposed to be doing and making sure that we're reaching out to new companies that we haven't worked with in the past and hosting some events or some informational sessions. So there's a lot in there just about talking to people and getting the word out about who Ada is and getting that feedback from the people.
Thank you. When you hear that as a board, does that resonate with you as the, as a good priority focus for our work this year? And that doesn't mean we won't be acting on the other strategic priorities. It means that we're going to lean into that particular priority in a more focused way. Any thoughts about that? Anything going off in your gut like, yikes?
I really think it's a cornerstone. You know, especially given some of the other legs of a stool that may or may not exist in economic development for this year.
Yeah, I mean, we have to reassert our presence, fact that that so much has changed in the economic development landscape locally, you know? As Dan was saying, when it's indicating like, you know, we've got to get our, get our base out there, reaffirm approach businesses that have met here that might not know, like, how we can help them. And so, yeah, it's great. I think we're in a good place to do that.
Any other thoughts? Jenny, I'm curious to have what your general reaction is to this because so much of our work will be supporting the work that you'll be continuing and possibly have in your heart and mind. Does, is this, do you see this as a way?
Yes, I, I'm really excited about the work that this board is doing. I appreciate what you're doing to reassert, reaffirm, reeducate folks about what, what Ada does. I also wanted to just let you know, if this is an appropriate spot to do this. The mayor and city manager and I met with Jonathan Anna, the new legislature chair of Union County, and with Elaine Daly, the majority chair. And one of the topics we discussed was economic development. They are both really interested in re-engaging in that conversation. And so we will be working to, to do that with them. Obviously, they have a lot on their plate.
Right.
So, you know, we'll work on getting some more time, but we are really, really encouraged and excited about their focus on economic development. So that's why I've been, this board obviously, you know, will be, be part of that conversation as well as the, the county IDA and, and other partners, so.
But I'm really glad that that happened, Jenny, because at our last meeting, we were kind of trying to talk through, how do we like position ourselves so that we could re-articulate our position in the community, but also wanting to, I'll be meeting with you and the mayor. And pretty soon to, for similar reasons, for some other reasons, but I think knowing that you did that, take something that we were kind of doing the hokey pokey with off the table. I'm like, I think we need to talk to somebody from the county. Sort of the general reaction was like, why? But now we, now that you're taking the lead on that, I think it can just help us think more strategically, what we can do to support any efforts and what we can do to utilize our board to encourage our other colleagues in the landscape to play in the sandbox as well. So that's really exciting. I'm glad to hear that because we were like sitting on a lot of ambiguity around that. That is great. Any other gut feelings, reactions about our action plan and the theme of the plant emerging that we really need to lean into that priority of ours that talks about promoting the community as a great place to do business and all the reasons that we could? Any other thoughts about that?
Can I just add?
You could do whatever you want, Miss Lake.
This theme is definitely through, not only on, it's definitely a strategy, but it's also touching our other strategies. So even for assisting at these two projects, like we have items here about meeting with businesses and targeting, selecting targeted industries and maintaining and sharing a pipeline among the boards, how we're communicating internally about our pipeline. So this theme is definitely showing up throughout all of our, our strategic priorities and I think it's a, it's a good way to. I think it's a, it's a good way to create that foundation.
And I'll just throw in, maybe I think the theme is very appropriate and also consider the word partnership.
Yes.
You know, just to, to continue to work in collaboration and partnership with other entities within the city.
That's really, I was just thinking about that because a plan like this could make us think about capacity and our own capacity to do the things we do. I think once we really start to do this work, there will be things that are clearly just our lane and we need to take the lead on. I think we can accomplish some of these other things, just about tightening general awareness around economic development. And will we sit in it by getting into collaborative situations with, with our colleagues? So I'm excited that the counties come back to the table and that we can figure out where everyone is. And then certainly there'll be things we need to do that are relevant just to us in terms of tightening awareness and educating. But I also think there's other ways we can get at some of these things by being in the room with other people that are talking about economic development. So one of the things that I'm real strong about is I don't think the board of directors should create a universe that's going to stress us anymore than we're already stressed. So remember that this plan is to guide our decision making about what we need to do. And Tracy, I was thinking, once we all get through this, if we could literally get more narrowly focused on a year one operating plan for the board, I think that that would be helpful. Right? Because we can do it all, we just can't do it all at once.
I'm wondering too, Jenny might be able to help me. I don't know if it was a council meeting or a planning meeting, but there were different entities, different businesses involved that were asking like, how can we get involved with my board? And it was like, you know, maybe like a graphic company or, you know, I don't see it. That involved company, but you know, that type of thing. And I just wondered, is it something that you could do?
I do remember that. I believe that was when the council invited my prime representative to come and present.
That's right. And so I'm just wondering if there may be a list of businesses that might be a good fit in order to, you know, are they maybe a passable ADA entity, you know, for, for growth or what?
Right. So yeah, one of the things that we have continued to press on regional partners is when can you let us know about my crown supply chain? Because I believe we're going to have existing businesses here that could be part of that supply chain. So then those companies will likely need expansions.
Right.
Right? Where Ada can, you know, does assist be, and assist to be part of that. So so yeah, we're continuing to ask those questions so that we can then, you know, our companies and like, I don't know about, you know, semiconductor chips, but maybe some of our plastics companies could be part of their packaging. Right? So you know, then we've got Bomer, Carrier, whoever does that kind of work. You know, hooked up with them and oh, Bomer says, we need to expand even more beyond this building we're already doing because, you know, of the business we could get from my. So I think Ada definitely will play a role for companies that we already have here that could get in the mix on those regional opportunities.
Yeah. And I think I, I like how you're thinking about that, Jenny, because on this part of us is where we want to identify certain industries or kinds of businesses to focus on. I think the more we understand your vision for city economic development and the role you want Ada to play. So we're like wind beneath your wings. When we're bringing these things to fruition, I think that that would be really helpful.
And, and what I'll say is, you know, I'm excited Cuba County is coming to the table again. I don't want to have city economic development in a vacuum without them.
Right.
But the way that their budget passed, they are not going to be standing up a one stop E D agency this year at least. Right? So we need to do some things now. So, you know, we'll do that. We'll, we'll, we'll move our vision along and talk with them as we're doing it and, you know, see.
We might become the model for their vision, who knows? Everything's possible. Great. That's exciting for me to hear because that's part of why I wanted to sit with you and the mayor anyway. So that would be great. Mayor, I know you're on the phone and can hopefully hear this conversation. Do you have any reactions that you may have for the plan and sort of this overarching theme and does it align with the kinds of things that you would like to see Ada do?
Yeah, I, I like the way everything sounds. I, I do want to reiterate what Jenny said about our meeting with Chairperson Anna and legislator Daly. I was encouraged, especially by the tone in which Chairperson Anna approached us and, you know, he really talked about what's good for Auburn is good for the county and what's good for the county is good for Auburn. Obviously, as Jenny just said, they do have their, their budgetary issues. But the fact that they're willing to sit down and talk to us and restart that conversation, I think that's good for all of us.
That's enough. All right. Anything that you need us to think about?
Now, Mr. Strategic Framework.
Alrighty. So if you'll look at, welcome, Tess. Don't say sorry. You know, fashion is life. I was noticing your code actually. So our board education topic today that we're going to talk about is the priorities for project evaluation. I think early on, when I was starting my role at Ada, we started to engage in this conversation. What are some things? And we have the application, but what are some things that really matter to us when we're looking at them? So I wanted to introduce that topic. Of course, you know, Tracy's my partner. So I'm sure she's put together something for us to review and Tracy, I'll invite you to either remind us or help us walk through what we've been thinking about here.
Sixty three. Think that those. Okay, so back in twenty twenty, the board, which some of you were on at the time, some of you were not, but the board took a couple of meetings and really talked about what their priorities were and especially in relation to project evaluation. We did this separately from our project evaluation policy, which is somewhat broad and general to give us some flexibility, but this was kind of on the back end. The board's saying this is what's important to us in terms of industries and outcomes, and these are things we should be considering when we're reviewing a project. We used it for each project for a while, but I think it probably fell off at some point and it might have been a while since anyone's seen it. So I want to bring this back and revisit this and see if there are adjustments or edits that we need to make. We don't need to necessarily do it today, but if there are thoughts today, that's great. But I think it might help as we move forward as projects start coming in and we start reviewing projects again, it will help to know kind of what the board's priorities and values are. So the first area we talked about was industries that have been of interest and that had been supported previously. There's obvious this, this covers the gamut really. It doesn't get very specific into subsectors of these. So when we later go to target industries, specialized industries that perhaps we haven't supported or might be important to regional supply chains, we might want to get more into subsectors. For instance, of manufacturing, that's a huge industry that covers a lot of things. So, and then after that, we talked about what metrics do we want to think about in terms of project outcomes. This included the number of jobs, which is something we have to look at anyways. But the percent of the incentive compared to the investment, thinking about a target number of incentive per job created or retained. So thinking like, do we want to try to aim for $25,000 of incentive per job? That's creating standard $25 or $35,000 per job. So we started to at least mull that over the wages of the jobs, you know, are they in line with the county median? Either overall for that industry as well as the local labor for the construction. So looking at the local labor policy. I'm sorry, it's not Karen. And then community in terms of community values, we really talk, a lot of this is actually about, you know, wealth generation, living wages. Are there intentional recruitment strategies to provide employment to underrepresented groups, some of their cerds populations, alignment of local planning efforts, environmental sustainability, reutilizing brownfields and other utilized properties. Again, some community factors in terms of supporting other community organizations, education, workforce development. We also wanted to look at local pyramid and then filling market gaps for the community. So those are the, you know, I didn't want to read all of these words for word, but those are the general concepts that we talked about last time around. So I don't know, Gwen, if it makes sense to just kind of throw it out there, like, what did you hear that strikes a bell? Or that you want to discuss more?
So I'd like to tell you kind of where I am philosophically about these and that we can do whatever you want to do. But when I see these kinds of things here and in other companies I work in, these kinds of items are sometimes used as filters or additional filters to help a board of directors think about the applicant, right? And so a question for you, Tracy, is were you here when this list was first generated?
Yes.
Did it get used as in addition to looking?
We start, so the, with some applications that came after it, I would distribute this with the application.
Right.
I don't know that we had specific conversation around these priorities. It was more of thoughtfulness for the board.
Yeah, we kind of, for lack of a better term, kind of like went back to just focusing on the applicants in their presentation and we balled over whether it fits with it, but we didn't really go line by line. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Fair assessment?
Yes. Yeah, it was more of a reference only.
Well, in my opinion, I'll get myself in trouble. My, that's why I'm on this board. My opinion was just black and white. None of it was found.
So the document was created, but you don't recall it being actively used?
Like, for example, the building next to, I can never think of the name, next to Duncan Collins Downtown. I I went there when they were ready. I talked to the construction. And I asked some people if they were doing any of that. He basically laughed and said, no. None of these people are from Auburn. None of them from Fiume. None of them from Senate County. None of them from Auburn County.
So Tracy, that particular project before this document, like Yes. So they were definitely not helping.
So I'm sorry, but there's no reason to have that stuff. It's just.
I agree. And I guess that's kind of where I'm going with this conversation, that we have this as another tool that we can use to guide our decision making. So, and this is what it is now. I want us to think about this as a piece of clay that if we need to re-sculpt it to fit, be more in alignment with kind of where we are in this present moment. I'm curious philosophically, how you as board members feel like having a document like this as an additional resource for us to use to make decision making. And I'm hearing you, Bill, I think, because if we agree to adapt something in this version, then we have to figure out how to embed it in the work that we do when we're reviewing applications. And Jenny, again, I'm in your perspective, the city manager and mayor for you as well. So just generally speaking.
Yeah, I mean, what, what I'm hearing there is a component around monitoring your project.
Right.
And, you know, following up with, with the applicants and making sure those policies are followed. You know, that's, you know, not a new concept around economic development incentives. So, but that would be, would be important. If you're going to adopt something like this to make sure that there's, there's a way in the backend, you have your projects closed to make sure desktop is making that.
Tracy, so if you are aware of other IDAs that have something like this, what does it look like when they're using it? How do, are those IDs using a tool like this?
I have, do you know, so I know, so all IDAs have to have a project evaluation policy. Some might be more detailed than others.
Right.
This is not part of our project evaluation policy. It was kind of supplement to that. Not necessarily, I've not really seen. I mean, I've heard of this in concept, but I've not seen an actual concrete example of an IDA using guidelines like this. Need the additional like community benefit agreements.
That's what I was, I was trying to think what that thing was called.
Yeah, so some IDAs have established community benefit agreements that require in addition to the admin, be some sort of a contribution to workforce development or N L D C or something else or require specific practices to be done within, and then within their project. I don't necessarily see like a checklist like this whenever, even just in terms of like, are we going to, based on living wages, on environmental, or like a score to this? I don't know if you have any, if you're aware of examples from that.
No, I'm not aware of other examples. I mean, some of this ground is covered in your agent and project agreement, you know, and it goes back to, or you monitoring it. You know, someone's covering your local labor policy, which can kind of monitor. So I mean, some of that ground is covered. Others things are covered across, you know, the, these things are all in your governing statute, basically. So I mean,
It's pointing to the industries.
Pointing to the industry. So, although, sorry, I realized no one can see what I've seen. So, and then metrics, I mean, a lot of this is also covered in your, your project evaluation. We got to add child care in there. Are you tapped? So it, it, it covers that ground. I don't think it's a bad thing to have something that people look at to sort of format their thinking in evaluating these things. It's not a bad thing, you know. You know, each project gets evaluated on its own. Using the butt four test. So you know, you, you still have to make that independent city when, when the project comes before you, but there's certainly nothing, there's certainly nothing wrong with having something like this to get people thinking.
Looks like a nice bit of reference to me. I think it would be really important if we have those new projects coming, probably prioritize some over other, not in that position currently. Certainly looking at it as, as you evaluate the project as an idea, really correct this, all of those things that you just talked about.
Yeah, one last thing, I'll get off of the box. I guess what, it comes down to me and my passion about things, it's what's important to us as a board. What's important to Auburn, what's important to county. Is that stuff important to us? Do we want to be part of giving a pilot agreement to a company that's going to pay people a non-living wage? I was on the Auburn school for 21 years. I've been on Cuba and Doug's post for, I think it's 15 now. And every time I open my mouth and complain about that, it just has anything to do with Ada. Complain about people making wages that are below the poverty line. And I have board members looking at me like I have horns coming out of me. That's wrong. And I don't want to be part of this board where we're giving pilot agreements to companies and planning coming in this community and paying crap wage. And if they're paying people 17 bucks an hour, guess what our tax, dollars or we're going, we have to give that, they have to go on state Medicaid or whatever insurance.
Some supplementation.
Yeah, because they can't afford, like that milk plan out there, they were doing things so great. They might make 18, 19 bucks an hour, but their, their family plan and individual plan is $160 a week. You can't afford $160 a week if you're making 18, 19 bucks a week. Can't do it. So all I'm saying is that stuff is good and we have to ask ourselves as a, at the board, and we want to give pilot agreements to companies that aren't going to stand by the local labor group. And then when they do hold it, that are going to pay substandard wages because I don't know how many of you have ever worked at a manufacturing facility. But let me tell you, I've, I've worked in them for a lifetime. Because I don't know how many of you have ever worked at a manufacturing facility, but let me tell you, I've I've worked in them for a lifetime. And it's not fun. It's not easy. It's not clean. Go home at the end of the day, you're dirty, tired, you're sweating. And I think we have to, we have to make sure that people realize that it's got, first it's got the local labor. And then when they're at this table talking to us, we gotta tell them, what kind of money are you talking about paying these people? I've done it before and they'll tell us something. And then when they, when they're there, it's something two, three dollars now or less.
You know, I think when I first was part of, I think I was on the board then, thinking about this. Bill, part of what you're talking about was a reason that I think it could be helpful for us to have a resource like this. In some ways, it will help us shape a set of values and beliefs that matter to us. I'm, I don't think any of us would be interested in derailing an interested company, but simultaneously, I do think that because of what we make available to businesses to come into our community, if there's things that really matter to us, we should be clear about that on the front end. So I was thinking like when with this. And and it might be, because a lot of that stuff might just flow through the process. It could be this community value section of it that we really want to be thinking about. So again, I'm thinking just as an additional filter and at least giving us the opportunity to say, if we agree with this, what truly will this company's impact be on not only the development, but if we have people that are working and also living in poverty, basically, right? Those are the kinds of tensions that we're setting. I'm not married to any of this. I'm saying I'm wanting us to think about if certain things matter to us, that then we say that these things matter and then engage in the monitoring work that we need to do to make sure that they do and hold people accountable for doing what they say to the way.
And I don't want to stand in the way of anything new coming to.
I understand what you're saying.
But it's a very, I don't wanna see people get abused.
I agree.
Like Beanwell Baker that I lost forty-five of my brothers and sisters. That company makes billions, billions of dollars in profit. And they're closing shop after shop after shop after shop, because even though they make billions, in twenty twenty-five, they wanna make billions more.
That's kind of what's happening. So, so again, we don't have to do anything really. These points of education are basically for us to just kind of hear where each other is coming from. Um, and to then we can, you know, if we move forward and decide this is something resourceful, I think in alignment with this plan. And the clearer we get, the more we can probably tailor some of this. But anything else like, cause this is kind of like gut level stuff, right? What do you just, what any other thoughts about this? Mayor, I'd also be interested in hearing from you. So this is a document that was originally created as just another filter for decision making. And I think the business question for us is, do we want to use something like this as part of our decision making as we're advancing the goals and strategies in this? And it doesn't mean it has to be like at the next application. I'm just.
Personal thought, I see this, there's a lot of uh really good reference, and it makes me wanna start my own prioritization within that document and like a point system. That's just me.
Right.
There's a lot there that focuses quite a bit, doing all the industries of payments, all of them. If as a team, and everyone may not agree.
Right.
So what you're saying, that would be my first initial just to prioritize with the top three. They're all important, but. So that's just my thought.
Any other thoughts? Anybody having a strong negative gut feeling about it? I think everything can be on the table. It's just information. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with having these types of um guidelines. I think that we do have to have a process for, I guess for lack of a better word, waivers, especially when it comes to labor. Because um there is a shortage of workers in in different industries. Um, I certainly want them to try to find local labor. Um if there isn't local labor, I certainly want them to try to find that labor somewhere in New York State.
Right.
Um but I think that they should have to explain to us why they can't use local labor, and it may be something that's specialized as well.
Right.
You know, so I would just say there has to be some type of waiver process in there.
I would say that the the waiver process does exist in a local labor policy agreement now. Uh, you know, the standard is good cost shown. So, and you know, Bill, if you recall, we worked on that together. I don't know if you recall working on that with me.
Yes, I do.
Beef that up.
Yeah.
Um, but I think the labor labor policy is in peace and shame, honestly. Again, it's it's a situation with monitoring. It is doing a lot of the work in there.
And I think, what about that community value section? How does that just sit?
I could, I just throw it out there that I could see. So we had talked about um or having a cover sheet to applications in the future that gives like kind of the
Right.
The high level overview of what they are asking for, what is the project, what is the budget, what are the jobs? I could see this being part of that cover sheet, so to talk through and say, which of these do they need? Cause you know, I don't know if it's a matter of saying they have to meet three of the ten or whatever, but um or if there's some sort of standard for that, but having that be part of the cover sheet of like, these are the the values that this project needs, you know, whether it's scored or environment or whatever. That's up to you guys, but I could see being part of that cover sheet to keep it on our graders.
And again, we're just on the table for discussion. Um I would like to ask you to just be mindful of this as an opportunity. Maybe if an opportunity presents itself, we could test drive the use of something like this, understanding that that's what we do. I think the thing for me is that as we continue to work together, that we get really clear about what our values are in terms of the companies that we wanna do business with, that kind of thing, so that we can just be mindful of that. And I think it never hurts to communicate to people that these are the things we believe. Do you believe in them? So I was like, what do you think about that? So I think it's really important that we not be happy in any way about anything that we do. And I think it's possible to have a set of values and not be obstructionist in the use of them. So I just wanted to remind you that a group of your colleagues have thought about something like this. Tracy brought it back to our attention. We don't need to make a decision about this today. I just want you to be aware, and then maybe Tracy, as we formalize the plan, we can take a look at this and maybe even align it more strategically with stuff that we're gonna really do in the early on.
I was wondering, uh maybe you should also bring this to governance, maybe.
I think it's not a.
I don't know, what do you think about that?
I think that's where it might have originated there. I remember Terry and I talking about this.
Just to start defining.
We might be the culprits that created this thing. So great, thank you so much. And as always, you know, I'm always open to your questions, your comments, concerns, any feedback. And if you marinate in this and think, you know, this hits my nerve with me, just let me know, and we just continue them.
How many changes is there? Oh, so six, sixty-three and equals two, just two page down. I just, I guess my initial reaction is like for for industries that have been in all the, like, we kind of know.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? For those that are possibly those. In that may not be so obvious.
Right. I, I just would like to reiterate what Karen was saying, and.
No.
What what Karen was saying to me. Board members, can I just grab your attention real quick? What Karen was saying to me that what was hitting her about this is that the industries in our community, we have awareness of. We can see their values at play or where their alignment. This could be a really good resource when we have a company that's coming from outside of the community to help us run them through another filter, just to make sure that we're we're in alignment. We don't have time to be okey doke, just like kids say, right? So we wanna make sure. So I love that thought, and we'll definitely take note of that. All right, Tessa, you ready to do all the things you do? Hey, Tessa and Tracy, do you wanna do the bills first?
So that.
Thank you for your attention to that matter, board. I appreciate it.
Um, so we've got one bill. Um this is MRV from December. Um and then a new bill is coming out very soon. Um and then we did receive some additional pilot payments. There are still, I believe, two pilot payments outstanding as of the last time I checked the mail. So we're we're working through those and and trying to get those in and evaluating um late fees for those. Um but yeah, so this is what we have right now.
Stop talking. Um, we met on the seventh and went through the um the finance community charter. Um the investment policy, pyramid policy, the extension of credit policy, and the property disposition guidelines. Uh Tracy, I've created year-end entries, and um we're going to look to the fixed assets and prepare for the audit. Uh we are still waiting on the county to return the fee waiver agreement. I don't think we've gotten it since last Tuesday, right? Um. Uh, we were, so we do have, did we wanna recommend to issue the late fee for seminary? And recommend to give an extension? Do we have to have that work or just discuss it?
Um, I haven't, I, so seminary, we will, cause as far as I can tell, there's no reason um not to. The, one of the late pilot payments, they had, they got rebuilt in December, so we were talking about, you know, maybe have a little leniency because they got a new bill and it had to go through their check writing process. We did reach out to them, that's Mac Studios. We reached out to them. I haven't heard back from them. I'm going to expect that moment, but uh we were hoping it would come in. I just had a funny bit of a mail.
So those are the only, and then um, so I think those were the only pilot payments that were considered for these. Um, and then um we had established that we will be needing quarterly, so we did our January, April, July, then October. Um our policy states that we would need a minimum of two. Those dates, January, we looked at year end. Then April and July, touch base, reevaluate, and then um in October, that's probably when we would um start budget planning. So those, we're going to try to stick with the quarterly and see how that goes. And then obviously, better. When you take that, um. But that was, that was um the majority of what our discussion was. We did look at the numbers. I know Tracy's been giving some pretty detailed reports each month, so uh I was just going to jump down to the profit and loss previously, your comparison with that report. Um, you'll see that this year, it was, it came in at a loss of thirty-nine thousand or seventy-two. Okay, last year, um. We, there wasn't really a lot of activity this year. We did get the admin fee from Baltimore, so that really helped. That was probably one of the biggest things that was different from last year. And then to go back to the balance sheet, um down, uh where it says total equity. I think we had discussed this before, where, you know, one of the numbers that you do wanna look at is what does your total equity this year look like last year? So there is that slight decrease. Um, just keeping in mind that basically that four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars is what what we're, what the value would be, so we want to see that be sustainable or growing. There was that, the, the slate or um, sorry, so it, overall, there was about a decrease of fourteen thousand. I think it's not necessarily a, it's a negative number, but not necessarily a negative sign just because of so much that has happened in the last year, and we know that going forward, we have a good plan and. Just, so, there's a lot of momentum to be probed, so not anything big concerning, but um as far as the fiscal responsibility, just wanna look at that.
Karen?
I just wanna say, you know, um it's been a tough year, but this, these, you know, even with the slight loss, it's it's, they were maintained. And and especially the the uh finance and audit committee has had to do a lot to keep correct the ship, so I just wanna give everyone credit for for doing that at this time. And so this is, I agree, it's just like, we're resetting ourselves, so we serve the, the, the community um much better in the future, so thank you.
Yeah, and when we have our um, the independent audit that's coming, that'll help us to, you know, we're just reassuring. I mean, and then even with the state audit, like I was saying, like it's not, like I'm, I've enjoyed this entire process. I think I have.
We're glad you do like that. Tag, you are it.
The state audit, like the audits, they just show us like where, where we can improve on. So and of course, the world is just always.
Well, we're lucky to have you, Tess, and your expertise. I will share with you that I spoke at Danable and McKee every year does a virtual conference for its nonprofit clients. And I was one of the speakers there, and Angela, who worked on our audit last year, they're already excited about the changes that they're seeing, and they really are looking forward to doing our audit. Almost ran what we call in my church a church lap, screaming hallelujah, cause I was like, we need you to like this. So and again, I agree, Terry, I think it's really a testament, test to you bringing your expertise to bear on our organization. And Tracy, us having him here and they're speaking highly of both of you, so I was like, poof, I was like, I'm the girl, like, we, you need to like us. So again, I think we're, you know, they're looking forward to it, and they've just been saying the engagement and the questions is really making them more confident to to come in. Um, it was also very exciting to see Elaine's legacy in action with these young women CPAs who were like, you know, excited. And Lisa Green's daughter is a CPA there. And because Lisa was on the board, could not work on our audit, but she's looking forward to being engaged too. So we have a lot to be proud of. We were in a tough situation. Um, and it's because we have this expertise at the table. Oh, yeah, yes, it will. I'll never forget, Stephanie, oh, sweat and balls. That's like me too, girl, bro. So we have a lot to be proud of, and again, thank you, Tess. It's really a testament to your expertise. Do we need to get approval on these items?
Yes, please.
All right, so I would like, can I do it, do I have to do it in two separate motions, or can I do it in one? So I would entertain a motion to give um our organization permission to pay the bills that are on the table and to approve the treasurer's report as presented.
So.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, don't let me forget you're up there, cause I would. Of any opposition? Sentence, we're good to go. Um, any new business, Tracy? I see that we have none.
Um, did you wanna run back to the updates real quick?
I could, let's do that. Please do that, Tracy.
Um, I think I expect that. Um, so you more or less just got the updates on the audit, um the financial audit, the annual financial audit. The audit date is February seventeenth, so we're pulling together um year-end documents for them for that date, getting them what we can in advance. Um, so we should, after that date, we'll be able to set up an audit committee meeting for March cause we'll have a better idea of how long it'll take them to get the draft together. But so far, so good. Um, the state audit is, continues to be underway. Um, I, as you all know, they've really been focusing on project evaluation and monitoring, which is kind of their default when they don't find anything interesting to look at. Um, they're going to have comments on this. It's going, there's going to be feedback about what we can do better and what we haven't done very well. Um, they've continued to ask some questions about how we evaluate projects, um risk assessment, things like that. Um, but they should be wrapping up actually pretty soon. Um, they'll be on site a couple of days this week, one day next week. And then I think probably after that, they probably won't be coming um here anymore. They'll finish up remotely. Um, and then we'll continue to send them documentation for our twenty twenty-four monitoring in terms of the forms we're getting back from the businesses that have opened projects with us. Um, those are due back in, at the end of January or beginning of February, so we'll just continue to send those along as they come in so they can see how our monitoring process is working.
Thank you. Anything else?
No. Um, and the other update, uh the residential properties, we talked about this briefly last month. There hasn't been any change um in the status of those properties. There's been no additional interest that I'm aware of. Um, so we can stay the course, we can make an adjustment.
Steve wanted to drop the prices up.
Uh, he he said that would be probably the next step. Yeah.
But isn't that what he was asking us for last month?
Do we vote on that, Trace?
We did not. We decided to hold off.
Okay. Okay.
A month, cause it wasn't, it was December. It was the holidays.
All right, so you'll keep a surprise of what his recommendations would be to us in terms of pricing and that kind of?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, do you wanna talk about this in executive?
We could. Would do, would, do we need to go into executive session, do you think?
Yeah, I think definitely.
Yeah, so I'd entertain a motion to go into an executive session to discuss our resident property, the properties. Oh, thank you. Second. All those in favor? I was a voice from. Bye, Jenny. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Jen. The last thing is the board update section of the agenda. In my experience on the board, that's just been an opportunity. If we have an announcement, something we wanna apprise our colleagues of, anybody have anything for that section today? Then I will point you to that Tracy's always listing events and activities that we can pay attention to, be involved in. Tracy, can you just say something about the AVO board member training?
Yeah, that's, that's optional, cause I think everyone here has actually completed it.
Right.
Um, it's a overview of corporate responsibilities. If you're here, you need what to look at in the board terms in product evaluation. Um, so it's a best practice to update yourself, but also you don't.
And can you just, can you speak to this conference that's coming up?
Yes, so um, every year in January or February, the Economic Development Council. Hosts a conference in Albany and it's very content heavy. It's not a marketing, it's not a networking one like the Cooperstown one is. Uh, it's very content heavy, lots of sessions about the current economic development topics. Um, although there is a little bit of networking. I'm not gonna say there's not a little bar time at night, but. Um, it's a good conference. We'll probably be presenting on something. I don't know what. I have a meeting on Friday about what. But yeah, so it's, it's a good conference. The member rate is two ninety-five per person. Um, and then the hotel is gonna be somewhere in the range of one twenty.
I was gonna say, so if you're interested, could you, they just contacted you to direct.
When and where? Um, so it's. So it's February eleventh and twelfth. That's, I know it's in Albany. It's at the Albany Capital Center. Um, so the hotel, the main hotel, well, there's a bunch of hotels. The main hotel is the Renaissance Albany Hotel, that there's a bunch of others. You can stay at right in that area.
So if anyone's interested, I always like, we can deploy people to events of this nature. Um, to bring back information. It's our way and we can stay on top of what's trending, what are the topics we wanna be paying attention to. So please just notify Tracy directly if you're interested and um.
And the digital version of your agenda is a link, so you can go to the event page and check out the agenda.
All right, y'all ready to go? If, if there's no other business to come before the board this evening, we can have a motion to adjourn. So move to second. Somebody, your seconders are gonna be exhausted. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you. Uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. I'm very excited about twenty twenty-five.